Okay, I'd like to call the board this Board of Education Special Meeting. It's September the 12th. The first item, I'd like to approve the minutes required, meaning their own minutes and benefits. Are there any changes to questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Brad.
Can I give a compliment once again to our secretary?
Sure.
Lots of things to include in those minutes, and they were very, very well done, and lots of great details. And I also wanted to, along those lines, since there was so much there, say thank you to Ms. Bear for putting the letter in the air to clarify what happened during that meeting. So between that and the publicly available minutes, hopefully everybody will have the right idea of what happened in that meeting. We really hope so.
Do I hear a second to Mr. Rose?
Second.
Ms. Tracy Collins, there's a tally. Do you oppose or should carry it? Thank you all. We're going to reorganize the order of this agenda for this evening, so if we can bump up the spots to the update as we're getting to next, would you appreciate it?
Absolutely. Spots to the update, first we go on this. In June, yes. In June, we brought in front of you a request to send to approve the final plans and request to send them up to Frankford. We did that, RBS sent those. They have sat there in Frankford for approximately fifty-something days. Mr. Shire and I took a road trip to KDE on August 17th to meet with Greg Dunbar from the Facility Division. In the past, we've been working with Mr. Dunbar and with Ann. Ann left Tech Department Education, so we removed a gentleman named Jack Solomon. We met him that day as well. He was, he was very nice. He was actually very apologetic in that our plans had been set for fifty days in SharePoint. And as the transfer happened from one to another, he started to look at our current account, move forward, but didn't look back at items that were sitting there in the past. So at that point, we got some verbal approvals, came back home, RBS has cleaned a few things up. Long story short, we are opening bids this Thursday, 2:00 in the boardroom, to see, hello, to see what who all has put in a bid, to see what the prices look like. And so we will be bringing that to you Monday night for approval. As soon as they open them on Thursday, the next thing that CODAL does for us is they start to look at references, because anybody can bid on it, but they want to make sure that the companies that have the lowest bid can handle the project, have good references, have all the permits that they need, and that they've seen everything that they have to before they afford the bid. And that usually takes them the fall of the day. However, Friday morning, because I know that we will ask for approval on Monday, and that's a pretty short turnaround, we're going to go ahead and put something in your board pocket, so you can start to see the prices and who has bid and what those bids look like. And as that day goes on, on Friday, we may pull something out and see if again exactly what CODAL is going to recommend. But that way, you always have it. If you prefer to do an approval in October, we'll wait, but KDE's already put us sixty days behind. It'd be very hard for us to get in the building and on this Saturday to come on the day they already given to us because of those fifty days, fifty-plus days, August 17th was in the bid, so now we're already in September. So if you all would be agreement to that, we'll put in there Friday, and you all still can make the decision on that Monday evening, and CODAL and RBS, they will both be here. If none of the questions are answered and you feel like we have to move to another meeting, we'll be glad to. Just kind of giving you a little heads up that it'll be coming, and Joe Nance plans to be here on the 19th. And so if everything looks good, the prices come in under the estimated amount that they've allocated and is approved, then we'll be ready to even go ahead and do like a finesse operation meet, how we do in the asset, and things like that.
All right, anything else, Ms. Ryan, about this process? Everybody think that we could go through this Friday and Monday before meeting and get it done, because CODAL has their information staring. And my suggestion is if there's any holdup in getting information, that instead of putting this offer in a boardroom, they could be scheduled another special short meeting just to get this through. We don't need to back something, we need to wait until everyone knows. If something runs out about CODAL's information, we can always do that, but I'd say we're moving on. All right, sounds good. All right, anything else, Ms. Ryan?
Ms. Jen, just to make sure. No, I think that's good, thank you.
If we could move next to the budget finding, Ms. Cindy?
I included in your packet the working budget that I'll present on the day of the regular meeting that will reach a group of September the 30th. There aren't a whole lot of changes from the tentative budget. If you look at the planning assumption page, the security base was budgeted at $3,081. That's no change from the tentative. The budget includes the rate of staff increases, that's no change. The budget includes $207,616 in textbooks, $182,000 of that comes from the textbook grade. It includes all the continuation of the condition in, such as公立 kindergarten, original specialists, and senior academy. The changes are that the budget includes $255,000 for the purchase of buses. Jeff, they can get rated for buses, depending on if it's a special A bus or a regular bus. The budget includes the second of six installments for the Kismet settlement. The other changes are all in technology. We included $125,000 from the TV2 one grant for innovative technology for classrooms, $160,000 for the CATS match, $54,000 for classroom orchestrator, and $350,000 for the purchase of teacher devices for the Air One and the One-One initiative. And the good news in the budget is that the Indian Fund contingency change, we changed that to $6,24,317, which is 7.75%, which is up from the tentative budget, which was 6.02. We stuck some of the discretionary funds into the contingency fund. Everything else, like I said, was budgeted transportation and technology. If you look at the charts of the revenues and expenses, you can see that we have the salary and benefits. We've gotten that down to 79%, which is down from 81.8% from the 1415 budget. Another thing I'll point out are the fund chip grants. The estimates, estimates that we're getting in for those budgets are down to $132,621 from the previous year, which most of that is in the care preschool. And then I've also included the bond payment schedule for this year and for all the years up through the year 2035. This is just a real quick plan of our working budget, and we have made significant improvements over the last two years, and we continue to be conservative, so we can maintain the reserve and be able to maintain all of our current programs. Anybody have any questions?
We did say that we included the decrease for the preschool for the state that I asked you about.
Yes, and I'd like to share with you board members that preschool was allocated different this year. Every district felt a decrease in the amount of state money that you just receive for care preschool. And what the state part is, with $7.5 million over here in this pot of money, it became competitive for it. And it said for school districts to receive a part of this $7.5 million, you have to do these certain things. We're very fortunate in Henderson that we already have collaborative efforts, collaborative agreements set up with private daycares. We have to show somehow a way to start to look at a full-time preschool program using the money. Luckily, we can't find that. And another option was to look at how to lend or get started. So those were some key points. Alicia Sheridan, Nancy Satterfield, then the RFP came out, and it started to steep out in July, but it initially came out in August. They have been working on the grant. We have put in, it has been written, gender, Ashley, is now how to finish it, and we've put in to ask for some money back. It's not necessarily guaranteed that if we receive the grant, we'll receive this $265,000, $265,000 that we received less, and I'm only getting $150,000 back to work on those initiatives. But we didn't want to leave any money on the table, regardless of what Henderson County can apply or can't get back. We want, we want to keep that back. So there was two ways to apply. You can apply for $25,000 planning grant, which means you're going to take their money and you're going to plan how to go forward, or you can go with implementation. And we went with the implementation, because our programs are pretty strong. So hopefully, we'll get some of that money back. I can't guarantee you'll get all of it, but yes, we have written the grant, and some evidence.
And that's included in the budget changes that you read, correct? Any other questions, board members? And we can receive some money back this week, you told us, Ms. Ryan?
Actually, I got a wish to ask. Yes, the mayor called and asked why she got ten minutes by time, and I saw he'd come there and come and have ten minutes for a time. And he brought the check for $175,000. It was tax money that had been collected by the city in Air several years ago, over several years. And they had complete audit completed this year. They discovered the error, and the very honest mayor and their auditor, they brought the check over. And they were handed a deposit in the chair of fund, but it was pretty exciting, and the mayor, he comes in town, he wanted to.
It is open door, thank you very much. Okay, Cindy, anything else to add? All right. We're going back to our regular broadcast. Do you have S O U advertising packages, Ms. Ryan?
Sure. We will ask for horrible action-taking next Monday on the 19th. I put that in your board pocket tonight, so that you can review it and see if you had any questions. So if you had any questions, we can make sure we have those cleared up by next Monday. The package is identical to what we had last year. Remember, the graduation is included. We always do that as a separate bill, just like we did this past year. And so tonight, I just ask if there's any particular questions that you have in mind. It seems very fair to us, as you know, a couple of years ago, we negotiated the price, and W S O N worked very well with us in getting that price within our budget. And they did a great, a great talk for us and with us, and so. Unless there's any particular questions, we'll put this back on the agenda on the 19th of the board of group.
Board members, if there's no questions about that, can we probably just put that in or consider it? Okay, we might just put her there, please. Okay, moving on to accountability formula, Ms. Kim.
Thank you. This evening, we are at a time in our test scores. We're going to soon be available on Wednesday of this week statewide. We have what is called Quality Control Day. And so I will be reviewing many, many numbers and different categories of data, and the purpose of that statewide, and we're looking for at least systemic issues. And so depending on how things go on Wednesday, if there are no major issues found, the state at this time is saying that the tentative publicly state for our starting test schools should release September 24th. Obviously, Wednesday is the contingency, whatever happens there. Last year, and I honestly don't recall the month, but we talked about how the state was going to recalculate our data, and some changes that they were going to make. And so I want to just kind of go more into detail on that this evening, and so that you all can see visually. We have some charts in front of you. One set is the 2015 Unriddled Learning, and one set is 2016. You do have these electronically, but unfortunately, you only have one up on your screen at the time, so this might be easier to see and understand. So I'll all go through this. There are changes at each of the levels for elementary, middle, and high school. And I'll just kind of go through on the right side of the 2016. Anything that's a change, you will see in red to make it stand out, and I will explain what some of those changes are. So in 2015, at the elementary level, the three categories for our learners were in the areas of achievement, gap, and growth. And they had each been weighted achievement at 30%, gap at 30%, and growth at 40%. This year, there is a change in that. Each of those areas will be divided into thirds. All of these changes were based on some basically statewide input last fall, about the same time, superintendents came back. All of the districts were asked, you know, what do you like about any category system? What do you not like about it? Give us some feedback. And so that's where these changes basically came from. And we stayed responding to the things that we asked for across the state. We obviously get what we asked for, and sometimes we get things that we were hoping to get. But anyway, this is, this is our new system. Nothing has changed under achievement. We still have the same five content areas at the elementary level. Achievement is the same in reading, math, social studies, writing, and language mechanics. And you do see the grade levels for each of those are assessed. Nothing has changed in that particular category. Things have changed in the gap category. We do continue to have gap, as it's always been measured, in looking at what's called a non-duplicated gap group. And gap is considered any of our students who fall in specific underachieving minority groups, our English language learners, our students who are on free and reduced lunch, or our special needs students. Non-duplicated gap group takes all of those students in combination, meaning I could be a student, and I may fall in one or more of those categories, but my scores count one time in each of those content areas. And we're looking obviously to see who wants students to be proficient and distinguished. So you have that calculation. In addition to that, this year, something has been added called novice reduction. And novice reduction is a little bit different. So now it is 50% of that 33%. A lot of math, math from this is from our high school English teacher, this gets a little championing for me. So Tracy, wait until you can help me. All right. So as we're looking in this, to kind of explain what novice reduction is, for each gap group, so at this point, we are not combined in any way, we are looking at each individual gap group separately. So we're looking at special needs separately, we're looking at LEP separately, we're looking at free and reduced lunch separately. In that gap range, if there are 10 or more students within that group who are shorting novice in reading or math, and/or math, then there is a goal that is set to reduce that by 10% each year. The points are earned then based on the percentage of that target that's met. And so it kind of is a scale. You may have had part of that, you may not have had, you may have had all of it, and so that's how those points are determined. If the goal is not met, or your number of novice students increases, then you are going to have no points earned for that particular category. In those two areas, whereas the non-duplicated gap group is all five content areas, the novice reduction focuses only on reading and math. Reading being 50%, and math being 50%, up to 50% of the third, okay?
Yes.
Yes, it so does. However, this may not apply to all of our schools. You have to have, first of all, that many students in a particular gap group. If a school does not have, you know, if they only have eight African-American students, then there's no possible way they would have a novice reduction target. In addition, we have some schools who may have enough students within that category, but not, not 10 or more didn't score novice, so they wouldn't have a target either. So if I don't have any novice reduction targets whatsoever, then 100% of my gap is calculated on the non-duplicated gap group. Any questions about any of that?
Okay. So you could have, if you have 10 kids in a novice category, none of that reading, math, 50% of stuff you can't, you have to the top, the way we had it before.
Yes, ma'am, 100% is calculated from that.
All right. Do we have guesses how many schools fit in that novice reduction category?
I believe we had only one from the previous year. And that may not be how it is this year, but from last year, we had only one that did not have any novice reduction targets.
All right. So for our overall, I would imagine, this is not really a huge calculation, because we don't have this, do you have some?
Well, I'm going to show you some of the numbers a little bit, if I can ask for permission. It can go either way, to be honest with you.
All right, I got it straight.
Yes, okay, okay. The last category for our overall learners is growth. And in the past, growth counted 40%, and growth was based on what we call the student growth percentile. And at the elementary level, that's only calculated in grades four and five for reading and math. I can't have growth as a third grade, or because it's the first time I take the test. So my growth will be measured in fourth grade, how I improved from those two grades. And so we have that category, which we've always had. However, that's now only 50% of our third of growth. The new category that was added is called categorical growth. And by categories, they mean novice, apprentice, proficient, distinguished. So if our students move a level, we get credit for that in reading and math. Students move from novice to apprentice, apprentice to proficient, proficient to distinguished, we get credit for that. The way that is calculated is, so any of those students who move, we add those students to our students who already scored proficient and distinguished. We take that sum, and then we divide by the total number of students that we had possible. And so they're looking at that. That's called categorical growth, which is then the other 50% of our third for growth. So that was a little bit more easily understood. Obviously, you understand, if I move to a level, then I'm going to get acknowledged for that. And that was definitely one of the things that we asked for. We're showing improvement, our kids are showing improvement, please acknowledge that, and give them good credit for that. What you'll also see for elementary, we know that all of this simply totals up to that one blue box, it's just 77%. That is still the same, that's not changing at this time. The other 23% is from our program reviews, and at the elementary level, that consists of four areas, our K3, writing, practical living, career studies, and also arts and humanities. So then those two numbers are added together to come up with the overall score. On the bottom right of the page, you will see a couple of different charts. Both of these are still relevant to an extent, but the reason we put one on the 2015 and one of the 2016 is because the state has said at this time, they will not be percentile ranking our schools. They will not publicly be putting that out anymore. Granted, all of the numbers will be there, everybody will see them, somebody can sort a spreadsheet and determine that, but they will not be publicly giving percentile ranks for any of the schools. The cut scores themselves for schools in our districts to qualify to do needs improvement, proficient, distinguished, or schools of distinction, or districts of distinction, those cut scores have not changed. And you see those on the 2016 in the bottom right. So those are still what they were previously, so nobody has changed that particular target to try and reach those. Any questions? I have a question. Okay, we will turn the page on each of your sets. You now have middle school. Middle school also has had some changes. You will see lots of red on their 2016 page. Previously, in 2015, middle schools had four areas that their other schools were determined by. They had achievement, gap, and growth, in addition, they had college and career readiness. College and career readiness at the middle school level previously had been based on the eighth grade student six score test scores, part of the E-PASS system. As of last year, Kentucky no longer administered the X4 or the planned tests. So that was completely removed. They didn't put anything else in its place to take that, to take the place of the college career readiness. Based on the research and the things that they say, the K-Prep scores are determining college and career readiness as well. And so that 16% was then equally distributed among achievement, gap, and growth areas. So each of those similar to elementary now are also rated at a third each. So for them, very similar, achievement did not change, and yet the categories are the weights, other than overall, it's now a third, as opposed to previously being 28%. In the gap area, they have the same changes that elementary had, with the addition of novice reduction, and the change in overall gap being 33 and a third, as where it had been 28%. In growth, they also have the same changes as elementary, with the addition of the categorical growth, and the change from that being 28% to being a third, as well 33 and a third percent as well. That's how their overall learner score is calculated. In addition, they have program review at 23%. Their areas for program review are writing, practical living, career studies, and arts and humanities to determine their overall score. to determine their overall score. It's the same. Yes ma'am, novice reduction is not any different at any level. Any other questions? Moving on to the high school level. And the box is going to get smaller as the high school is saying. So my new Mac, my class, sorry. At the high school level, none of their overall weights changed. They still have five categories of achievement, gap, growth, college career readiness, and graduation rate. And each of those weights remain the same at twenty percent. They did not have any changes in achievement. And again, they are still measuring sites at the high school level. The biology EFC or our elementarys and middle's still not being held accountable at that content area this time. For gap, again, novice reduction has been added into their calculations so that gap has been divided between the non-duplicated gap group and novice reduction. Again, only in the content areas of reading and math for them. Numbers are the same, a minimum of ten students scoring novice will create a target. On growth, we do still have, because the way the plan worked, those students who were juniors last year who took the ACT, and it goes back to their previous sophomore year when they actually did take the planned tests. So this is the last year that growth will be able to be measured for high school students this way because this group does have planned ACT scores. They will have to come up with something different for next year. College and career readiness, excuse me, and growth, I apologize. But in growth, you will notice that they do not have the categorical growth. That is not part of growth at the high school level. Theirs has remained only the measure from the ACT growth. College and career readiness has remained the same for them as has graduation rate. So their overall score, overall learner score, is still weighted seventy-seven percent. In the area of program review, the high school level did have an additional area for accountability this year. Just as the other schools have writing, practical living, career studies, arts of humanities, this past year, global competency world language is also part of accountability at the high school level. Any questions about that?
Cam, on the high school, or assuming that college and career readiness and graduation rate, isn't it years correct that was same as they are on the 2015 page?
Let me look for you. On the bottom of the page, yes ma'am, those need to be changed, thank you. I tried to cross out my dollars and cross my beans, but those dates should be changed. Yes, as far as the years for those two, they should be said differently. The graduate rates should be by a different class.
They've been 2016 and 2015.
Yes ma'am. I will change those, thank you for catching that. Any other questions at the high school? And Ms. Lisa, this is what you were asking about a moment ago. So what we did was, basically, back in February, when the state came out with what these calculations were going to be, they actually took our 2015 data and they recalculated it so that they would be able to make comparisons to our upcoming 2016 data. So you have some numbers here. You have a comparison here, and we give you two different family examples. The first example, this is a school's actual 2015 scores, what still are considered their scores, what were reported, and how that school will still be considered no matter what, public and everything else on their score report card. They recalculated though, using the exact same data in February, based on these statistics. So you can see for 2015, with achievement, gap, and growth as an elementary example, remember, achievement was thirty percent, gap was thirty percent, and growth was forty percent. This school had an overall score, meaning their learners and their program review combined, of seventy-two point eight, which if you look at your chart on any of your 2016 categories for elementary, that put them right at distinguished, the exact number to be recognized as a distinguished school. If you take their exact same numbers and data and apply it to this 2016 formula, again, noting that our weights changed, everything moved to a third, you see the changes in their number. Again, nothing changed in achievement, so that number did remain the same. It was calculated the same way, but the weight was different. You look at gap and how that changed. Remember, that was now based on the non-duplicated gap group plus novice reduction. And then the last section, growth also changed with fifty percent being measured on the student growth percentile and fifty percent on categorical growth. That then changed, again, program review was the same, added in. That school's overall score then became a sixty-nine point six, which would have categorized them as a proficient school. So you can see, yes ma'am, depending on the makeup of the school, it does make a difference. Any questions about this example?
So growth goes up, which is a good thing.
Yes ma'am.
But because gap goes down, you still never have a lower score.
Depending on, and you can see, this was a pretty drastic change. This was a change, you've got a few points here. This was a drastic change for that particular school. So yes ma'am, it's the fact that every, and they always have, every single child matters. Every single child is important, and the performance of every single child is critical.
Yes ma'am. Just get married when they start counting two or three times.
Yes ma'am.
Do you want to ask a question about what she changes?
A second example, and again, this is another elementary school example, and I'll be honest. If we used a high school example, we only have one. So that would not necessarily be appropriate. We had in middle schools, we only have two. We have choose from eight elementary schools. So, another elementary example. Actual scores from 2015, again, with achievement, gap, and growth at thirty percent, thirty percent, and forty percent. You see each of those scores. Including program review, that school's overall score was sixty-eight point seven, which categorizes them as a proficient school. Taking the exact same numbers, exact same data, recalculating it into the 2016 formula, weights have changed, with everything being weighted a third. Achievement stays exactly the same because there were no different calculations there, other than the overall weight. Gap for this school included novice reduction, as well as the non-duplicated gap group. And the last category of growth included the categorical growth, in addition to the student growth percentile. Adding program review into that, this school's overall score then became a seventy-three point two, which moved them to being what would have qualified as a distinguished school. These are the, and that's what, this is the reason I'm coming to you tonight. Because this is going to look very, very different for every single one of our schools as this new data comes out. And so I wanted to have the opportunity tonight to explain to you the changes and how things will be different so that when we start looking at all of our numbers, I'm upon public release, hopefully it will make a little more, a little more sense.
Ms. Schreiner, I think you already mentioned that we do have some elementary schools in the gap category where it seems that it could go either way for a particular school. We do have some schools that do not have ten of one particular gap area, then five that will have like that points.
Especially when we calculated this, meaning the non-duplicated gap group, one hundred percent from that.
Some schools that have more kids in the gap area, that, you know, it's just, which calculates, including every kid that way, and so.
Every single one of our schools would have the potential to have students in that novice reduction group. Obviously, depending on the demographics and population of each of those schools, they could have more. One of the things that, and I'm not sure if this is where Miss Bear is wrong or not, but you also have to think about this, and I may literally only have one of those groups. Just give the example and say, I had fifteen special needs students in reading, and twelve of them scored novice. And so I now have a novice reduction target. And out of all the possibility, out of the ten possibilities where I can have a novice reduction target, that is the only one, and it now weighs fifty percent of my gap. And that's huge. Yes ma'am.
And a couple of kids could skew the whole school.
The performance of every single child is important, and we need to meet the needs of every single child.
And we used to look at scores, where you would go back and look at the same kids from kindergarten all the way through, where we used to get those charts. Now, those are all skewed because you're revising those scores, but you're comparing them not to the same kids.
It's very challenging, you know, with the changes that are made. And something to look forward to is the new federal ESSA law. So again, all of this will very likely change next year. And I'll see if I can get him to explain all of that.
The philosophy that we take in the last several years, few years and several years, is that what kids have all got, every kid counts, every student counts. And every one of our principals, Ms. Harmon is here, she and I have name and claim lists. They have them in high schools, they have them in middle schools, and they have them as far as all the special needs students, all the minority students, I mean. So they know and monitor kids' progress all the way through the year. It's, we can still show growth in our kids, as you can see, and that category can improve. But if it's still in apprentice level, we got points for growth, but the gap, it wasn't. So it seems to sometimes play against each other. But in the overall, we really watch math also to see, are they progressing through their school year in progress? So every student counts, every kid counts, every content area, every day.
If you're Miss Keach, now say yes, 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 but we're going to have to do a good job of explaining to our public that numbers don't always count as to how we're educating students, and we have a good education system here. These numbers change from year to year. We have to explain to them, well, they're real people, this, we can't keep up with this. We're going to have to explain it. We're giving them a great education, and we have to say, oh, no measure.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment and kind of get you back on what Ms. Bear said. You know, I think schools that are doing a good job, learned a long time ago, districts learned a long time ago, that if you have a guaranteed pile of curriculum, if you have good, solid instruction, they can change this twice a year if they want, and we'll still be fine. We're going to do fine, no matter what the measure is. But I agree with Miss Bear, this is critical for, first of all, our staff to all understand, and then for our public to understand, that you cannot compare the labels from year to year. And it seems like in the last, I don't know, ten years or so, parents have finally gotten how that works. So it's going to be a relearning for many, many people. But I just, I feel so solid that what's going on in our school system is good for kids. It's good for every single student, and it doesn't matter how they calculate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cam.
As I want to say to Cam, thank you so much for prepping and explaining to us. And I'm passionate, we understand, thank you.
Okay, moving on to review administrative procedure fundraising, Ms. Chris?
Hi. So we have created an administrative procedure for dealing with crowdfunding websites. This is a pretty common thing that's come up recently. Crowdfunding website allows a teacher or a school to say, here is a need that we have, and allows the general public to fill that need by donating money on a public website. So we probably need a procedure to sort of write that in and control a little bit of that procedure. So the definition is that crowdfunding is a practice of funding a project or venture by raising many small amounts of money from a large number of people typically via the internet. Many crowdfunding websites exist that target funding for school projects. So Anderson County Schools considers crowdfunding as a fundraiser, but it does not count as the two school fundraisers included each year, provided all the following conditions are met. Projects must have prior approval from the building principal. No more than one crowdfunding effort can be acted for a school at any given time. Crowdfunding terms, using crowdfunding, there can be different terms. Principals and teachers should understand the terms prior to the start of the project. All or nothing, this means that the amount requested is not, if the amount requested is not reached, the project does not get funded. The donor then has the option to pick another project to give, or give the current teacher a credit towards their next project. Keep it all, this means that if any amount is reached, the school will get a check even if the goal is not reached. Schools shall monitor and take downsides when the event is requested and is completed. Equipment, if a request involves equipment, either technology or non-technology, prior approval needs to be obtained from either the director of technology or the director of maintenance, whichever one of them first is required. All monetary, non-monetary items, supplies, or equipment obtained are the property of Anderson County Schools and all inventory procedures are put aside. All monetary donations must be accepted according to the policy and procedure that govern fundraising. A check should be requested to be mailed to the school in the name of the school, not to the individual person. When developing a project, be mindful what is being requested. The intention of the request always needs to be followed. No personal identifiable information may be used in crowdfunding effort, including but not limited to student names or images. Files to be managed at the school for the crowdfunding request, this file should include the principal's fundraising approval form, the written details of the projects, as well as devices posted on the platform website, any photos or images posted with the project, and a copy of all agreements. Any questions?
Are there certain projects going on right now that are using this?
There are. We have, I don't know currently what the numbers today, but we were looking at this since the last month or so, we're buying a handful of projects currently going on in schools. Some are requesting furniture, remastering, some are requesting seating arrangements, some are requesting technology, laptops, tablets, or phones. So part of this is, we created a centralized base on our website of what, for example, what technology bases were allowed to be purchased. And it comes into a question of being able to support the devices that come in. So a teacher, and most of these crowdfunding pieces are really small, five hundred to a thousand dollars. But it allows a teacher to buy five devices, and those devices are different than all of the other devices that exist already in the district. It makes it really difficult to support that teacher by, with the software that they need or with the management tools that they need to, for those devices. So centralizing saying, it's okay to do those things, but if you do, please use, please purchase this, or this, or this, depending on what you're needing. Anybody help them to be able to support online, by my support?
Do we have ending dates for every one of these projects? Or some of them just, or do they give them to?
Most of them are, it depends on the website, but most of them haven't given a date. And that's why the definitions of all or nothing, or keep it all, are in there. Because some websites say that if you buy the end date, you don't reach your goal, then you'll keep it or it is dropped entirely. So there are end dates, and they're generally only a couple of months, which would, and one of these is open. So we only allow one to be open per school at a time. And that would allow them to still get those additional resources, but only one at a time, so you're not having competing fundraisers.
Are the ones that you currently have already going, will we go back and make this, or will we allow those to close if this begins to move?
Most of them, at this point, are under category. We got, we got a lesson, the gentleman, Brian, he occurs to me, a month or so.
We got, we got a lesson in the gentleman, um, Brian, Chris brought it to me a month or so ago. At the principal's meeting last month, we said we need to break, we need to break. And there was actually a couple of teachers who had started theirs and asked permission to continue it and asked them to stop it. And once we got the procedures in place, then they could go back out there. So, um, I think, I think we're good if that makes sense, their review without finishing up. But, um, what was, what's out there, we should be alright with it. Just felt like it's a great way to invite all in the world and that is sort of tabbing our community out and I think we'll get, and, but we need to have some downloads going on.
I did want to mention, for the ones that are already out there, I believe they already had a principal knowledge of those sort of differences. The administrators knew they were coming home, so they weren't, or aside ever from the teacher.
I think I know the answer, but is this policy, was it written by KSBA or did we write it and they approved it? I know our, our program went down with the policies. I just wanted to bring that out so people didn't think that we created this, I'm assuming KSBA signed off on it.
Yes, yes, they did. Uh, Brian and Chris got together and, and wrote the procedure and then Robin sent it to KSBA. We did make it a policy, we made a procedure and you can see that it's, that it's attached to policy book very much. It's just how we monitor. And yes, we definitely need it.
Thank you for doing that, yes, that's definitely needed. Moving on to district facilities plan, Ms. Steve?
Yes, um, the, uh, every four years, uh, we need to develop a long-range, uh, building plan. And to do that, there are certain, uh, procedures and regulations that you need to follow. Uh, which is, the book that's in front of me here is about sixty-seven pages, uh, sixty-seven pages. But, uh, that's the, uh, school facility planning man. And, uh, each four years, we, we set aside a group, a local planning committee, um, and, uh, meet with them, with an architect or engineer, as well as, uh, facilitator, which is just go that route. And plan out what, um, what needs to take place facility-wise over the next four years. And that will guide us in our efforts to, uh, to solve issues around our different campuses. If it's not on that plan, um, it's not going to do that, uh, basically. So it's a, it's an enormous task, um, that looks very thorough into every building. Um, it determines a final, um, total need based on what we see, what, uh, the local planning committee, uh, sees. And then that kind of guides our, our steps to, uh, to use money to be able to make, make progress in our, in our facilities. Um, there's specific guides to go along with this, like I said, that manual's there. One of the things that, that I'm sharing with you tonight about it is that we'd like to, to, Wes, um, that we use a, uh, a facilitator for this. Uh, KSBA has a person that does that, um, and, and they, they have a fee associated with it. The fee is for that, for that, uh, for our size of district, eleven fifteen schools and seven thousand dollars. Uh, and then the other thing they do is they do a normal travel expense charge for the facilitator as well. And that goes up to ten fees. This spells out how many and how many times to me, uh, so you shouldn't really go over that ten, um, amount. But that's what I'm requesting in the next, what we, that we kind of move forward to. We do what it's going to do and we were waiting for a letter, so that when we went in August, we asked about that. And, uh, you know, it was a little different, we said, no, you, yeah, we'll wait for our letter. So that's what we said, that worked, that's what we were asking you, it's okay. And, uh, kind of, that's what we said. Um, so we're ready to move forward with this, we need to move forward with it. Uh, four years ago was our last, uh, this twenty-two, uh, was our last time, so we need to have a place to get it going. Um, that's really the, the information I wanted to share, I may have missed something that I have that I should have given, but, uh...
We've always used the facilitator as KSBA's always worked for us, they always, the last three cycles I can speak to. And we've used it with that bootcamp the last three times.
One of the things that allows us to do is focus on ours rather than specific seven, seven pages. They can focus on that and we can, we can make sure that we have all the information gathered and exacted, uh, and they can worry about sixty-seven pages. In particular, so if you don't miss a step, if you miss a step, then you're going to fall in and, uh, there's going to be an issue, uh, or it could be an issue. So that would be our question, my request is that as we move forward with this, we would use it to kind of facilitate the process and then we'll work on the, uh, after that walk of service. But that would kind of make...
We will be part of that plan that you were working there because choosing folks from the community, those are your schools.
Yes, yes. Oh, there's a large team that's spelled out.
It's spelled out. There's certainly that.
And it's, uh, making sure that we have somebody from every school from, um, that is, it's very tricky, so we can take care of that. And we can get started on that. Staff.
Do we use, do we use theirs, what's the target date to have their district facilities planned?
Yeah. Going through the process, the way I, the way I see it, the way I understand it, I'm talking to Katie when we went in August, was it, it is a several month type of thing. And there are certain times that you can, that you need to have your facilities planned done because the group that approves it only meets every two months or, uh, something like that. There, there's a certain timeframe that you have to give them, otherwise you're going to sit right away until that group gets back in it, uh, to be able to prove it so that you can move forward. But there are several things that we need to add, there are several things that we need to, to fix from two thousand twelve and down. Uh, and knowing some of the adjustments that we're doing now, um, we can, we can add those in. So it, to me, I, I believe our meeting get, and time to be done, we can kind of get on and get started would be somewhere around March or April. Uh, about the time we go through all the steps and be submitted in. Uh, so, get out of our case.
If you all approve us on, we might need to move forward with the facilitator now. We would, the time run out, trying to be one of your, your actors right this day.
That's one of the district times that we came. We were just asking questions, very good. Thank you, Ms. Steve. Um, pipe grant? This looks like a deep river. Do you have any, in this review?
Uh, we'll get just, and start getting attached in your, um, board packet on three different PowerPoint presentations. And as you know, at a work session, I think it might have been last month, at the work session, we went through and gave you an update of where we were with our pipe grant progress. And so I'm not going to go through the complete PowerPoint because you already seen almost all of the slides. First, I'm going to just staff absences. And the only thing I'd like to mention with staff, staff absences, is we will have our last conference call to finish the grant up next week. And, um, the conclusions that we came to are on the last couple of slides. And those are on slide fourteen. And let's back to slide ten, that's the next slide in staff absences. On the same page as you all were. And that is to say, here's, here's what our conclusions are. Coding of the funding source, you know, we were, we were looking at what we could control when it comes to staff absences. And professional development was the realm that we thought we could control. So under what we could control, the coding of the funding source was completed correctly on the forms. Principals were coding it correctly when it came into the district office, the administrators were coding correctly as well. We also found that the school initiates the most professional development opportunities and that schools send their staff moderately to professional development opportunities. Meaning there wasn't one school, we looked at specific data, that way over send and there wasn't one school that didn't send anybody. If it was a really good balance, we did notice in the high school that they seemed at first, their bar graphs, when we created bar graphs, where the data seemed to be kind of high, but we learned obviously that the CTE, uh, teachers are required through their program to attend so many professional development opportunities every year. And so that looked like a little bit of skewed data, but we put every piece of data in there. And the biggest finding that we found, we're looking at professional development, was the coding for a substitute teacher was devolting to the general fund. And so then, as you look forward on a few slides, we created a new, uh, flow chart pattern from page fourteen, but I'm not sure if it matches to, to vote next month. It's fifteen for you all. Um, where it, it talks about how the employee determines the type of absence and then it goes into how we will log it all the way down to how we will code it. So we...
So it won't ever just be general, or it typically wouldn't be general fund, it will be coded in a, a specific, like you were an example of it?
Correct. An example would be, um, Ms. Harmon sends...
I've passed in five people took PLC training during the school.
Beautiful, and you're going to pay for it with...
Title one.
The title one money. So as the travel voucher goes through, you either travel pay for title one and the subs will be returned back to title one also, not defaulted to general fund. And so the very last, uh, page, our key findings, we feel like our cost savings is estimated, we think this is low, but we're just estimating at this point of around about a hundred thousand dollars. As we have data in the PowerPoint that shows we had eighteen, over eighteen hundred PD absences for five hundred certified people. So I keep that perspective. But not every one of those certified people will be in a sub. And so as we look at the number of teachers who were, also the teachers that need a sub, we feel like that would be only a thousand professional development opportunities at an average of a hundred dollars. So we feel like that's about what our estimated cost savings would be. Um, our key concern still, they ask us to, what's your main point? Your key concern is that we're able to make the change in tracking in a timely fashion. It has been made on the paper pencil version. We are working with a software company at this time to make that directly in Faceoff. But they have to rewrite part of the program to make that happen. So we're tracking it paper and pencil, we just want to get it fixed in the Faceoff, uh, computer as well. That will, that is how we will wrap up our piece on staff absences. But I do want to share with the board, we want to include in the next step, and that we are going to continue to look at sick, unpaid, paid personnel just to see what our efficiencies are there, as well, we have had some huge problems with that data. So, um, I'll be anxious, I'll be anxious to share that with you, whether it's just kind of through email updates, this is what we found to discover at our, our work session. So staff absences are completed and those are the changes from the last work session. Any questions on that?
We were taking the information that you used right to describe, we, we can take this and keep doing this for years. We just keep going through processes, but we've already worked on our policies and our procedures during these past years. So now you can turn around and read those more.
We can use it in technology, we can use it in maintenance, we can use it in, in a school. The principals could take that process that we learned and do it, and just like there, particular at P D, or whatever topic.
There you go, but we get ready. Any others, any questions? That's great, please, thank you.
Hey, Charlotte, do you want to share some of your changes from last work session?
Basically, the PowerPoint you have from me, most of the information that I presented last time gets the same. Um, if you would just go ahead and jump to slide seventeen, I'll go over a couple of things there. Um, on the improvement plan, the first thing we're going to prove is the cycle menus, that's done. We're adjusting it as we go based on the first month. We brought in some new items and they've been a huge hit, double within failure. If it's a complete failure across all the schools, we're able to, we can force on the kids again. I believe that's some success there. As far as a new supplier, we switched from CRS to GFS, and that has been a huge bonus for us. With the GFS, right there below, but limited manager ordering access, before the managers could go in and order and to watch orders being placed for twelve schools and trying to catch everything and make sure it's all being, that's, that was not true. Or they couldn't order, you know, they would order corn, but it wasn't, it wasn't the most present they could do. Now we feel the order guy is for them. So they can only order what's been approved and what's in that order guy to control what's being ordered. And the even, the other thing about that is that once that order guy, or they place their orders for the first time, at the end of the month, they have to do inventory. In the past, we've had a printed out white piece of paper, they go through there and they count. And sometimes maybe they don't put some behind the inventory because it left on the inventory list. So, uh, we won't jump out there, it's supposed to be not a different happen. Now, when they order with GFS, at the end of the month, it generates inventory for them based on their order. So all they have to do is go through and check, yes, I have this food left on hand, this food left on hand. Um, it is helping their workflow, making it easier for them to do the inventory and will have better control to know what's in the schools. And I'm getting them to understand the fact that we don't have to order a month's worth at one time. With GFS, they can put their orders out two weeks ahead, they can control it, we can keep less than the freezers, which we should be doing. And that's another nice thing about the company is before we had to get so much in at one time and the freezer would become overloaded. Now they can order again just as they needed for the menu for that week, trucks come, everything's great and we're not overloading our freezers and our walk-ins with too much inventory. Uh, we are revising the production records, we are putting all of our, um, menus into N Team, which is what the state recommends. I think they come for an audit next year. And then once everything's in N Team, that will generate the production records for us, which will help as far as what they have to mark, whether, um, all the items that are on the menu that day automatically generates, prints for them, everything's done. Instead of them having to write it out, write it out and prepare the production record, make sure they're listing everything on the menu on it. Um, on the next slide, and you've already seen on slide eighteen, where this is our estimated savings. For GFS, additional training, time to control the labor, meal, meals for each kitchen. And I just wanted to give you, um, a little preview. It's hard for me to put a lot in here yet because we're just in one other school. To see how our process is working, see how we're doing. But I wanted to show you on slide twenty, just in the first month, and what's great about the month of August is exactly sixteen days that we served meals, this August congratulated us. So that makes it great for our comparison chart. Uh, we did serve a hundred and four more meals at breakfast, two hundred and eighty-three more at lunch, we have that on there for you. And then on slide twenty-one, you'll see that the au la carte sales, um, went, increased by five thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars from last August to this August. We were able to bring back some more ice cream items to the kids that are now making the smart snack. So, um, they're going crazy for ice cream right now and buying their extras. And I love it, if you're at a school, please try the frog spit.
The what?
It's called frog spit. It's the frog spit, if you're going to eat your frog spit. It's an ice cream man. And then on page twenty-two, or slide twenty-two, I wanted to kind of show you, um, our federal reimbursement. We increased it by thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars from last August to this August. Now, a lot of that is because we have two new varsity people. But even when I take that into account, that yes, we brought in less for paid meals, that thirty-four... that thirty-four thousand, we still had an increase in our revenue of over twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's attracting out all the lost from the paid meals. So it's, going to CEP round is a great program, it's going to help us turn things around and I think one more here and we'll be exactly where we need to be. Any questions?
Thank you, Charlotte. Do you have anything to add?
With the pipe grant, the grant was from KASA and allowed us to look at a lot of our processes and then the process, change those processes and save a lot of money and prepared for two different projects. The last one is the physician control. And if you look at slide two, the problem statement that was identified was we had some physicians that were previously unallocated and not budgeted, and it resulted in almost nine percent variance in the budget that was passed in the past. Oh, and this happened over a three-year time span. This allowed us to look at our internal processes, to monitor our physicians, not our people. The whole time we've been looking at this, we've been looking at numbers of physicians, numbers of students, not necessarily at people per name, because whenever you're looking at the budget, you will get the numbers. It, the physician control project has allowed us to have a more seamless conversation between finance department and HR department. In the past, finance, I think, was not running until the decisions have been made. So Cindy's been a huge partner at the table, and also as far as this PowerPoint, she's the, she's responsible for the creation, so she did a great job with that. Whenever we looked at all of this, we looked at our current process and then looked at how can we improve upon that to make sure that we're following within state regulations, within our district policy, with measured against what's best for students. You know, there are numbers, there are positions, but you also have to look at what's best for our district. Whenever it all came down to it, we've outlined a process that works, not just to make the numbers make sense, but also that will benefit our district and our students. We, the process is outlined pretty well in the flowchart, it's on slide seventeen, that shows the process from beginning to end, where it's basically a one-for-one. Whenever a position is open, it will have a position control number in the MUNIS system. MUNIS is the, the system that's, you know, used for payroll, used for, it's our, it's our personnel management system. So she, and she's, she's spent hours, not just working on budget, but working on this position control and assigning numbers to every single certified physician. At this time, we are just looking at certified. Last time it's down the road, but it's a huge task to assign these. So we look at, the way it works is you look at your staffing numbers by looking at your projected enrollment for each school, looking at the state numbers, looking at our district policy on staffing. And then if it says we have twenty-four positions, twenty-four teaching positions at a certain school, she has twenty-four position control numbers. So if this person who's assigned this position control ID were to resign or retire, then we replace it with, you know, it's like a one-for-one. And we've been, we've, we've had an unofficial way of doing this via spreadsheets, but this makes it where anyone who has access to the MUNIS system can see it and it, and it won't let you go any further, it won't let you add anyone until you have that position control ID. So that's why the pipe, the pipe grant has been a great help in helping it, allowing us the training and not allowing us the time to look at all of our processes and make that happen. And just for an example, the, if you look back at slide twelve, the certified staffing, one of the key things that we were learning out of this is, you know, one certified physician could on average cost the district fifty thousand dollars if you look at, you know, starting teacher pay and benefits or anything like that. If you look at fourteen, fifteen, where we had six hundred, around six hundred and fifteen, six hundred and eighteen certified staff members, you look at the sixteen, seventeen, we've already, I mean, this process has kind of been in place, we're just formalizing it, I should say, where we're at around five forty. Seventy-eight positions is three point nine million dollars. Now, you also have to take into account, we've had some student enrollment changes along the way, but just in looking at position control, it can make a huge difference in, in our, in our budgeting process. So bringing finance to the table during those staffing discussions, having a defined process and having it lined out through position control IDs and through our back flowchart, we know that we will realize even more savings in the future.
I can hear Dr. Stuck saying yes, I'm literally going to put a "i" here.
I like all of these, but if you don't have a process, that's how positions get added year after year and some that perhaps the board wasn't even aware of, and that's just how we get into a financial situation. So I love everything you all done.
Any questions for you? Great job, you all. The money savings are good, but the efficiencies are top notch. Moving on to change December work session date, is for you?
I think we ran into the same request last year, and that is that there's superintendent summit that is scheduled for that first Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of December. I would like to attend that, and so I would request that we possibly look to see if we can move the work session to December twelve. And I thought I heard they say it caused a conflict, if we just wanted to do a regular board meeting in December, I would be okay with that, but it's one of the pleasures for you all. So I would request that we just change it if we could, but if the talk didn't work, we could pull off Monday, and that would be fine.
Change your office? Or did it to the twelve, or did I put it to twelve?
Are we gonna meet superintendent, well, the council councils is one thing that's in there, but remember we talked about the superintendent evaluation, and we talked about doing that in December, we sort of about halfway, kind of halfway point, and did we, I didn't, I kind of was throwing through here real quick, I didn't remember a date that we set, but I was just wondering if we could, if those two, if we did change it, could coincide to that.
Do we have a date, center council councils yet? I don't know where. Do we have that? That's December.
We're to the summer. We typically did it, that you start as our work session.
Yes.
We did two days.
So we didn't have three, if you're lucky, we had two nights of council. If we can, if you are looking to do that again, eliminate like a work session in the county council, it's Monday night. Or you want to give us suggestions?
I actually did like first, December first, December entire.
The county council.
Two nights.
Yeah.
So we get an easier version, skipping any of the other issues. And your superintendent's name, if?
There's three days.
Sure.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
So do you all want to put the superintendent's evaluation in at schedule as well, or do we want to try to move one of these items back to the room?
Well, we could possibly do, we have a top page of this recent post, we have the council of twenty-nine and the first, November twenty-ninth.
We just, twenty-nine, we did the twenty-nine and the thirty, and we did two dates back-to-back? We get that, we get back to, continue back, is that okay?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-nine, twenty-eight.
Yeah, you're going to see Thursday.
But you could do, maybe Tuesday. Is there any else?
That's how. No, sorry. I was looking at the chart. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
And then that, these are twelve open, do we still want to do board session for superintendent evaluation? Just do that instead of doing a regular work session?
Is it something that we can do on the regular board meeting? I don't know exactly, are we looking at just one standard area, are we doing feedback, what is the format?
I don't think we all mentioned that, did we? There were just certain things up there, we might just touch on some of them. I don't think it should be as involved or as long as it would have been before, because it was just certain things.
I thought it was a discussion and more or less a make or repeat, is kind of what I had in my mind, but.
It was kind of working on things that we already put down, that we wanted to see simply for us next. If we obviously do that a couple hours before the regular meeting, that would be the last time, because we did it after your session. Now, say we can do it before, or maybe before, or maybe before meeting is in six, five, seven, seven, six.
Sorry. November twenty-eighth, we're showing the council, then just wants a regular, that is December nineteenth.
Fourteenth.
December nineteenth, we'll start at five. Then we executive session.
We agree with that.
Executive session, five to five, four to five, and then we sit till six for regular.
If we change it on work sessions.
It must a score for everybody, I don't mind doing that. I move that we as a board meet on November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth to review the council councils information with our SBDNs. And I also, as part of that motion, request that we cancel our meeting on the fifth of December.
Correct.
And we add to the agenda on, or I'm sorry, we add an executive session on to the meeting that's scheduled for the nineteenth at five o'clock to review, do a mid-year review of superintendent evaluation.
Second, or just to clarify, if you change the start time of the twelve, nineteen meeting, it's going to turn into a special meeting. You could technically know this is a special meeting at five o'clock and then have your regular meeting exist. So just kind of, yeah, yeah. Just that way we got the flexibility.
From a, an executive session to five o'clock to five forty-five, a special board meeting.
Second, I'm new. I'm embarrassed, am I? Can you post? Okay. Do we have to have terms on these, we need to set them, they're going to be terms of section.
Can we set later?
Okay.
Because they're all going to be special meetings, so they're going to have special notes for work. So it's going to be kind of a whole day.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Speaking of Spanish, foreign trades are throughout.
Right. Now, this is an area that is a little foreign, it's worse, but it is a little fun. We were invited to meeting with the county judge, and the county judge was on this last week to discuss foreign trade zone designation. And what it boils down to is the rural court has had basically approval because of foreign trade zone designation, but it's kind of been dormant, they've never activated. If they don't activate it by January, it's going to set us in. So what they're trying to do, they're pleading an application to allow foreign trade zone that we have activated. And Joe, if I get off base on this, make sure I remember, calling and everything that Greg and Bridget told us. So as part of their application process, they have to receive a letter of approval from each of the taxing authorities, uh, local taxing authorities, saying that they don't have an objection to the activation of the foreign trade zone. And the reason for that is because inventory or products or equipment that are held in the foreign trade zone are maybe exempt from the property taxes. Now, I don't know exactly the impact, I think I said that in the email, that that might have on us. And, and the reason it's zero, and that's why we were in meeting, raised and really addressed that, because the way the law currently, the way the stations are currently written, inventory taxes are kind of self-reporting tax anyway. So either they're going to, or they may control their inventory so that as the date that they have to report it, they have really low inventory, and then it becomes in the next day. They also have a way to kind of get around it by what they call inventory trades and goods and trades. And so if it's held, it's just held in a location for a period of thirty days, or sixty days, six months, six months, then it's not subject to trade negotiations, like people say impacts are good and it's kind of good to transit. So for those reasons, I guess it's never really been an impact. So the, the deal breaker though, is that if any one taxing authority does not submit the letter, they can't do it, it's a criminal or nothing. So we brought it, we told them we could bring it up tonight, see if there's information that you all need to make a determination, and then we'll then do a formal approval at the regular work team.
Saying there is no taxing.
We'd let them.
We let them work right there.
Other organizations.
Saying you can.
Like the library and the other organizations everywhere, nobody collects any taxes or that.
Or is it posted?
No. It's because, it's because it's in, because it's considered in transit.
Oh, it's been considered in transit.
Well, it's not even operating right now.
It's not operating now, but what, what, for them, it's kind of a part of the national development, so that say a product's are coming in and it affects tariffs and duties as they're coming into different, different ports, or different parts of the country, but they can also allow products or goods to be stored there for an extended period of time. And so they're there for extended period of time, they wouldn't necessarily be subject to that six-month window for goods in transit. Now, one of the things that he says is, you know, do, are these companies reporting it now? We don't, it's, it's not like a property tax where it just is automatic, we know your company has to report.
What you're trying to do is report taxes.
So they have, right, so it is-
It's because they're warehousing.
It's because they're a warehousing facility, not like a manufacturing. If they were manufacturing, then yes, we would be.
But, and I think where it could possibly kind of, that then these manufacturers could store things there potentially, so it's not in their inventory, it's a storage site. It, it's, it's also theoretical.
Theoretically, I mean, you're setting up a, I mean, theoretically, you're setting up a tax-free zone for a company to go in and operate in a tax-free area that they can keep set there for years. You're never going to get a tax rate on that.
Sure.
Whereas if you're a desert.
But at the same time, if you get a company large enough within that zone, um, that comes in and employs 200 people, they're going to buy houses, they're going to have property, and that's where you build your base.
And that's where you build your tech. I mean, that, those are the things that we have, we have to be a business friendly and a manufacturing friendly, corporate friendly community. That's how we're going to build our tax base. And while, yes, I mean, I, I see where we, where we have to try to make sure.
I know the side of, the side of, it's like, you know, going to create, I, I don't want to cut our kids out of money that in the future could be.
But, but being such a work environment is that the way that the law is currently written, these companies anyway, already have a workaround. There's already a workaround that they're utilizing now. This is just a, kind of another option. And if we don't do it. I mean, another community is going to do it, and we're going to.
They'll just move down the river.
That's right.
Right.
And.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, right?
I understand.
I'm trying to get what you're saying, I just asked.
A lot greater than collecting property tax or.
Right, and a lot of times, equipment and, um, like in your manufacturing businesses, there's a lot of equipment and, and, uh, stuff used to produce is already exempt from out portion of the property tax. So, it's really just personal property, just inventory, which they're already finding, if they've got an accountant, they're already finding the loophole with the in-transit, um, so it's almost like a, it, it fits a jewel in our Riverport for economic development, for recruitment of, of larger company. And, oh, George, is it Georgetown that has one from Toyota?
I mean, there are not, I think the materials that I sent in a text, the email, there are, uh, maybe listed. There are not very many, and they, some of them have said some within them. But he used Toyota as an example of that was a key, the development of the foreign trade zone area was a key factor that they used to lure them in.
Do you want to see that tie in with I-69?
Right.
Interesting, I'm not seeing this, um, please stop this.
Trying to wrap my head around it.
My meeting, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, and I'm trying to make sure, uh, shorting ourselves by, jumping on a pay grade or something that's new to us, so. So, you put that on the agenda for us to approve in next, next week? Is that what they need from us?
They, they did, they even sent us a draft of the letter. But what, the reason we went ahead and put it on the night is because Greg said he'd be happy to come to a meeting and do a, whatever formal presentation. But, like I said, then we have to set aside the, um, where the, if there were a lot of questions or if there were just a couple of questions, we can get those cleared by, or get a formal action thing on it.
Are you okay with that on YouTube? Okay. I'm just sitting here, just, okay, cool. Okay. I think I just sit there. So, you're on? You're just waiting. Sitting right there, waiting for your phone situation. Okay, so, Ms. Tracy, would you like to make a motion? I'm just starting.
I'd like to make a motion, yeah.
Would you?
Dr. Stuck, would you like to send it back? Public favor say on it? In your post? What is he carrying with you?